The Black of the United States of America. Through the Republic for which your stands, what nation of God, in this world, will be redeemed.
So I will share with you first most of the information and details from here today and questions you've asked. I do have the information they're going to share with you on the same form that we used last year to share our data. And when we're talking about our data, it's about student achievement through our integrated guidance grants that we get through the state. How we spend our SIA dollars, actually investment account dollars, our high school success dollars, our early literacy grant dollars. All of those funds allow us to do some extra things with interventions with kids and how we look at data. And so today you're going to hear some of that data. We are required to share third grade proficiency. Ninth grade on track, to graduate statistics. Four-year graduation rate statistics, fifth year completer statistics, attendance across the work. And then this year they have also added eighth grade math. I saw something for the first time today that they said had K two data on reading instruction in there also. And that's not something that I have in my sheet for you, but I know is inherent in the data we can get from Lisa. And then the other one that they have added, which is not on the sheet yet, is eighth grade math. So we have some, I think we have some assessments that we're going to be working to implement. To get a clearer picture, that eighth grade math, that we do have information on progress there as well. And. Use like that one you can share. One more. So on this, I've revised it a little bit with the dates. Our goals through our agreements with, as we work with ODE to set those goals, still the same. They will be working to set a meeting with the. If building administrators will be there too. They will work to set a meeting and will give those goals and look at new criteria for setting goals for the eighth grade math standard. And reviewing what we have to see if they are still solid goals. As we move forward. But what we have are still the same pieces that were in place when we submitted the integrated guidance application. So our goals there for Driftwood are still at the 30% rate for. For reading at third grade level, you can see the attendance data down below for six. So that first column is the goals, the second column is our performance in 23, 24. Next is our performance in 24, 25. And then our, if we have statistics, how we're doing so far this year. Again, you're going to be much more detailed from, from the building principles. That middle column with meeting or exceeding third grade reading, that proficiency is based on our cadence, our DIBL scores. We do not have anything except the beginning of the year there. So those top columns don't follow with the cadence data. And then down below, you've got ninth grade on track, the two graduation rates and attendance. And again, we'll hear about eighth grade math proficiency. And K two will be inherent in the reading data. And then there's one other requirement about a local. A local, another local assessment that's chosen from the data list at ODE. And I am 99% certain that what we do with our cadence and. And DIBLs and that tracking works, we are going to have to continue our discussion about how we. Pump up to a formal assessment at the high school level that will coordinate with what we have and. And give us the data, whether we use cadence and DIBLs continuing and build on that. We use something different or we find something that works at the upper level and we believe it worked. But that's a discussion of the three plus of the gathering that we need for. So real quick overview with this data sheet and then our information coming. The initial questions or anything that you are looking for from our report? On data. So that. Principals can make sure they address those big ticket items for you if you have, otherwise those share with them. Any specific questions or things you were wondering about to start with, or do you want to wait at first?
I'm happy to wait here. And you know, after going to the road show Wednesday night. It's not what they call it still, I don't know, we always call them the road show, anyway. You know, it'll just be, I think I'll have more questions once those dictates come out of. What the choices are, the four assessments, and like you said, you think that what we're already doing is going to meet that. And that will be excellent. And then the, the local, the local choice of what the other. Whatever they want to call it, integrated guidance reporting criteria is that we choose and stuff. I think that will come out more too in the information. That's for I think.
Yeah, no, I think there's a lot of data out there and there's a lot of very valid ways to do it. And I mean, it's really been how you guys are looking at it, I love this too.
I have a slideshow for you, but apparently we have no way of pulling it out. So it's got the printed version of that and that's all other documents that I pulled out from our IREDD. And then some tracking. Documents from our Title I folks as far as the interventions and our baseline's are for this year. So on a PowerPoint. It addresses the attendance in each of the different grade levels. We're continuing with our incentives with the popcorn party, the tickets and the cards and so. It doesn't help and sometimes it does, it just depends on the grades. I think that we're probably going to have to come up with some other initiatives. There's been phone calls home, I've sent out the attendance letters for the first go around. Just hoping to see if their attendance improves. So this is year to pay Lisa for the school year, this is this school year, yeah.
And so one of the things that we do when we're having attendance issues. Is we have a series of letters depending on how many days the organization is, it's about. 10% of the school year, if you're missing that much, then you are considered chronically absent. So we pick four, eight, 12 days, so it's four day or maybe or 12 day, we send letters on them. Have contact with the family and trying to see if there's anything we can do to help. Provide them support to get their kids to school. So that's one of the, I know that's one of the things both wanted to hear was, we're giving you the data, but what do we do with it? So we look at that and send letters on and try to make contact and improve attendance for each student who's having issues.
We literally discuss that at conferences too, so I actually gave the attendance letters to teachers, to them, distributed to the families to discuss their attendance. And that went, went along with other things besides schoolwork, but disciplinary things, just so that we could have a whole holistic conversation around it. I also just included a multi-year trend, so actually our attendance is improving. So while it looks a little dismal in some of our grades, overall, we are making some improvements. I identified that chronic absenteeism by grade level. With COVID, how many students out of each grade aren't considered chronically absent, so things we need to work on for school. If question on attendance.
Which grades must be very good.
And fourth grade? I think the new teacher, I like the new teacher. Is there, you're showing up.
So it's like the data follows the chain of state, right?
We have. Some students that are having legal issues and have been kept out of school because of that. We had some students that have had some medical procedures and have siblings. And so everybody goes to Portland and has that taken care of. And so there's a lot of those exceptions in there, but it's still showing up in there. Yeah. Seems like we lose two, then we get two, we're just creating a bit longer. It's been. Back and forth a little bit. So the next one is our ELA results from 2024, 2025 to our spring. Standardized testing. We have a lot of work to do. And what I've noticed is that our trend hasn't been improving, it's been going backwards. Hoping very much at least on, and I don't know how much, it's like we've only given Title One one full year. Certainly shown that we've made some significant improvements and I can show that over the course of the school year. But how it translated into the state scores. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't show the improvement, so I'm kind of wondering in year two, what can we do to really target? What the kids are going to need to know for the state testing. Talking, in talking to a couple of the teachers today. I think that they're looking at two inches dive on really reviewing what the test is covering. The state gives us review items to introduce into the classrooms. And put it up on a Google classroom, so we're kind of mimicking the electronic response model. But using some of those sample questions and getting the kids used to it. So that would be one way that we can get them up to speed, but it's going to take a bit of a lift for sure. So the dark green and the green, that's all within, you know, grade level. The yellow is level three and I, in your packet of the other additional things that I've given you. I've given you the. Language around what each level means in terms of proficiency. So that. You want to really view what that means.
Well, on that sheet is dark green exceeds.
Yeah, dark green is students performing, is demonstrating, I'm sorry. A thorough ability to read closely, to analyze, to comprehend, so yeah, that would be above. Level three is performing adequately. And then level two is performing partial ability. And then level one demonstrates minimal ability. So that's the way you're going to look at it. So obviously, grade, grade three is a huge concern. And while we have some students that can demonstrate, you'll see with the IREDD data that can demonstrate that they can read. They have phonological ability, they've got sight words, they can read, but they're not really comprehending. And they're not grasping elements of literature. With that big idea, and so we're really kind of struggling on. Getting the skills up to speed while still trying to teach the content. And that's kind of been very difficult for fifth and sixth grade especially.
So I keep telling you that in my previous three board bucket for 4D grade review, I mean, it was in a lot of case data. We saw that same thing with the general assessments and the state testing results just.
Yeah, and I've had as a teacher, when I was teaching in Brookings. My classes were, I taught sixth grade ELA and they were just horrific behaviors. I mean, I just thought we would never get through it and they all did beautifully on the state assessment and that just locked me over. So you should, so know sometimes, right? So and then on the, yes.
We have any special. Activities or. Old school background of the school down there that. May it testing fun or something that, that you know, was a.
Never stare, I think if the school kind of gave alluded to the older kids and if they didn't pass the state test, it wouldn't go on to the next grade level. And so there was a fear. And they had to do well, otherwise they weren't moving on to the seventh grade. So we don't do that. And it's not a reality. He wasn't the principal there, so I'm just saying.
That's curious. Some schools, some schools have, they, you know. Make, make it almost an interior celebration, there's things going on, you know, special each day. That they're, they're because it's testing, we're trying to encourage, because of Brown and all, encouraged to that new world.
When I taught in New Jersey. ELA again and social studies and I was teaching resource and regular gen ed. We had classes that started, I don't know, February and March, the whole after school. And it was basically getting kids ready for what they were going to see on the test, what the language was using. Giving them a lot of graphic organizers to kind of help them through all of the different tasks. And it kind of set them up for success and most of them did very well. But those were some strategies that we used in that particular school district.
And teaching to, teaching to the test necessarily, but utilizing the formats. So when they get on those computers, they have understanding of what things are going to look like. How to get through those multiple step questions that get asked, which are not necessarily a part of. The DIBLs and that instruction. Definitely, definitely something to look at and how we prepare, what we prepared with. I guess that's, you know, what I was getting at, okay, so if the problem, that's not our local president, don't feel that. Is states of that fact, that raises. Questions all by itself, but still. Are we doing everything we could do in the school to remove? Barriers, roadblocks, barriers, road, roadblocks, barriers, spheres, whatever the term would be. To students wanting to do well, being encouraged to do well as well as they can.
Community engagement came up within my staff, saying that the fifth and sixth grade parents are not always very invested. We had very few that showed up for parent teacher conferences, or I shouldn't say that, very few that actually kind of respond and have a. Ongoing dialogue about what's happening in the classes. And really are kind of identifying it's, it's, what are the parents doing, should be. How are we going to get them engaged in the process? And I think. Part of the early student success regional people, that's what we're looking to do is to get families in through Title One. Instruct parents on all the different elements of literacy, how we can support students at home, what things that you could be reinforcing. We'll give them activities, so our Title One night is going to look a little bit different, it's going to be a little more instructional this year. So we're kind of hoping on that very low level that we give parents those strategies to help. And make them excited about being part of their children's learning. But that's, that was a big piece that my staff believes is a component, that this is not very important.
Do we offer any? Testing strategy class, like before you take the SATs or the ACT, they actually have. Strategies, it's not the materials.
I do think they have some test strategies of college and curriculum, but I don't think it's very significant, it's just a small.
Just wondering if you can scale that down for that moment, so they can actually. Digest and metabolize it rather than getting overwhelmed, freezing.
Well, I had a conversation today with a teacher and I asked her, what note taking method do we use? Is this in your class or at school? Because previously, when I was a young teacher, I was always teaching MLA. So what is your format of writing, what are you doing, your resources? How can we do this as an entire school, so at least they're prepared with one mode of taking notes and writing papers? And she was like, no, don't really have one. I was like, okay, I think that's something that we need to talk about it or in our next staff meeting and see if that's something that we went in district. Because even when I was ELA teacher for middle school, my sixth graders still had a component that they had to complete in that fashion. So they were already. And notes were, you heard about, and writing notes and follow up, so I think it's a good conversation.
And being a former staff member here myself, I can say that it has been before, it's just been allowed to fade away. What were you using before, that's what I'm trying to remember. Yes. I came from an avid school where the avid strategy philosophies were just targeted at students at risk, it was school wide. Okay, and yes. E.P.s that, that, that each, each student in each class, that our future were. Were using and did make for. A G two. Building those skill, building. I mean, it's a learning thing, you have to, you have to take notes in any kind of form, that's corner, you have to be active in the community, plus going on, good process. And you're putting, you know, they were all that's learning, so. Understanding the process, reading through what's most important. Honestly, yeah. We use mind mapping, graphic organizers, it won't work well for, for, for many kids, but. I don't think it's really any, other than reading, being an effective reader, you know, this hand, it seems more potential effective than. Than teaching and expecting. No. And that goes down to, and it can include. Some kind of check or assessment outcome. That's just. That's just no, that's just no.
No, but that's evidence, it's evidence based, it's, it's right there, the connection between writing and learning is very powerful.
Yeah, I didn't even think avid existed in Oregon, it allows for one conferences and, you know, speakers, was the state avid person, I didn't think. So it is, it's not a complete foreign concept. Pretty strong, I think.
On the flip side of ELAs are math results of last year as well, in third through sixth. We have a lot of work to do in math. We have started some intervention math groups along with our reading intervention. It's, I only have one instructional aide that's doing it, but we have purchased a. Intervention curriculum that she'll be using, so she doesn't have to like make things up, it's legitimate. We divided students up by groups based on need, really on their IREDD scores. So that they're seeing Barbara four days a week for 30 minutes. As, it's the same as the, the reading intervention as well, but at least we're getting that rolled out and consistent. And hope to get some, some of those basic skills that they're missing, they're just, they're working on addition and subtraction and multiplication and division. And then when we get to the broader content, they're too busy trying to figure out the addition and the subtraction and they're, they're not able to engage. So hopefully Barbara will get, get some of those kids up to speed and hope to see some improvement there. And then I just broke out what the state is saying about my third grade, current third grade class. And so we have a lot of high-risk kids. That seems to be the, the bulk of them in both math and ELA.
Oh, were these kids included?
They, the state says don't blame COVID too much, because our numbers have been going up. Since before, since before COVID, and while that was a big pickup for sure. This is, this is speaking to something else.
Except when I think of it, I don't think of it as COVID, like COVID that's in this school, but COVID. In some ways, those years changed the mindset of the parents in many ways. And that's where I was just trying to figure out where they were at.
A lot of literature too points to the use of cell phones and computers and other kinds of electronics. And it, it changes how the brain responds. And, and so we're, we're teaching very much the way that we usually teach. And yet the kids have learned in a much different way. And it has changed their brains, so it's how do we, how do we, how do we fix that, right?
Still have a problem with, with. Motivation in the sense that, thinking of all the different things that happen in our school environment. Where kids are recognized, our grades cheer on, I'm very, you know, got anything to that. Everything else you can think of, you can get an award, you get this, that, and you clutter scholarship. But very little of the day-to-day. Rewards, things they incurred, they, yeah, I want.
The incentives to show up beyond paperwork, the school. So that was more like clubs, active clubs. And it's also like work and volunteer experience, and that's during the work week, but with the clubs, but on Fridays with the work and volunteer experience. So they can earn up to two credits, I'm doing that, whatever it is, too. So if they want to work on Friday, they can bring their pay stub and they can get up to 65 hours as a half a credit, up to two credits for electives for high school. And so a lot of kids are liking that, and so I usually try to have like. A PEP plan with them when we go over what are the, what are your strengths and weaknesses, what is it that you really like? And then, so then therefore intrinsic motivation, how are we getting you to enjoy your life and seek it and find what it is you're looking for? And so I have lots of conversations with you at this point, just, okay, what does that look like in the community? Who can I help to pair with you? Whether it's people from the RDR or Trio or all the organizations that I'm learning to then slash that path.
Well, what's nice too is that when they, they, they come down to Driftwood. I mean, my kids are just, they're light up, they're super engaged and to find more opportunities to get the bigger kids with the small kids beyond peaceful schools, right?
Yes.
Would be amazing, I think that that would generate a lot of, you know, happiness to learn, you know, an interest in learning. If we could do project-based learning on Fridays or whatever it is that we could work something out, that would be, that would be terrific for them.
Especially the pain, not the numbers, when we think about interventions, whether that's going to be a class for the high schoolers or whatever, we've been having these conversations. However, that looks for second semester, if that's creating a class and then we teach them how to have small groups. And let them know, what does this mean simply, right? And then they put them to like, how do we get to this number?
I did run the IREDD scores for just third grade and I've got ELA on the side. As I was discussing, you can see that, you know, we've got phonological. Awareness is pretty darn good, right? And then the high frequency vocabulary, pretty darn good. Vocabulary, not so much, and then we start losing our comprehension piece and reading literature and reading the informational text part.
And when I see numbers like this, I see, I see potential and possibility. But if we're going to make a difference in the area of literacy, we should be first to.
But if we're gonna make a difference in the area of literacy, we should, we first have to change how we instruct kids. To learn to read. And then after they learn to read, then we can really focus on reading to learn. And I think that's a, that's a key piece that we need to keep in mind as we set up professional development activities. Is what we're doing with Title One is showing a difference. Um, it's, it's still new. We're only in year two. But when we focus on those things and we're focusing on phonics and phonological awareness and how you put together sounds and. And letters to, to make words. Then they get that down. We have to continue to build on their newfound skill of being able to read. So that they can pull that information out and really think critically about what they've read. And that's the, that's the reading to learn part.
So second, this would have been our second graders last year. And so. Second grade, they're gonna learn phonological awareness. They're gonna have. Right, their sight words, high frequency words. And to me. You know, they've really made great progress. And so now Title One is gonna start working on the comprehension pieces, feeding all kinds of different um, types of. Materials together and discussing them. So I can see. I can see the impact of those nuts and bolts. So it'll be interesting to follow this particular grade level to see how they improve as we move forward. Into the other type of grades. And then on the other side is our uh, math placement. So number and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data and geometry. So we have quite a bit of work to do, as you can see. This is, we just started with our interventions with Barbara. So it'll be interesting to see what kind of progress we make mid-year or if we do our, our next round of testing.
One thing I want to share on um, data, especially at the elementary level. We share more things with you with the red, yellow, green colors. Is that uh, it's. I, I look at something like this and the first thing I'm doing is I'm checking the size like. Checking the size of the red and then I compare it to other um, years or the next test that comes out in winter and spring. Comparing those colors is huge. It's really easy to see. You can see whether we're behind or not. But uh, something else to remember is as we go through the. There is a, a pretty, pretty big range there for each one of those, those colors and those levels. And so we can have kids that are clear at the bottom, just reading a couple of words a minute. And then uh, we, we make huge progress with them and they're reading. You know, twenty four, twenty five words a minute. Their times twelve what their performance is, but that, those numbers still don't get them out of breath. So um, that's something that I will, as we go through and have these data workshops, that's something I want you to think about too. We're gonna share the big progress that we make. But there's also going to be little wins that are getting us closer to that big progress that are sometimes even more significant than moving. Uh, a color range.
So at the beginning of the school year, we always have, you know, learning loss over the summer. And so the big yellow line doesn't really surprise me. Being one grade for, you know, early on grade. Would be our, our eighty percent and then uh, one grade below. The doctor that. Doesn't, but to me, that would be typical.
I'm actually pleased to see that it's not all red.
Yeah, me too.
That was one of the things I noticed too. We don't have a whole lot of green, but that yellow is big. So that's a, that's a jumping off place. And then again. All the way through K twelve, how do we put those things in place that hit the anchor portion of what we're trying to do, the. Engaging with the community, doing real life activities that are relevant and kids can see that. It's motivating. It's what they want to do because they. A lot of what kids do is copying adults. They want to do those adult things and have it be meaningful. And so the more. We can work with staff to help them provide activities to do that. And bad for that and impact on how they.
I love what you said about like remembering that maybe each of those colors is a pretty broad range. And there used to be, I don't know if it's still there, but there used to be a growth statistic in I ready that would print out pretty good charts like by student or by class. That uh, was kind of useful because it got into that. So you know, it's, it's useful to look at this, but then sometimes you can also be really surprised by who's wrong.
Yeah, the, the individual data is amazing and that's what we are using in our Title One interventions for sure. Because that's how we're breaking out our groups on our mates to be working on what I just was not going to share the individual information. I think this was next. It was just a little bragging.
I have a. But I don't want to down your bracket, so. My, my question is, um, because I heard you talk about the intervention. At what grade level do you start having students participate in the intervention?
Oh, we start in kindergarten. Kindergarten through sixth, then everybody's getting something. Um, we're a Title One school, so we are either doing extension activities for, for the students that are on grade level. And everybody else is doing something. To build up whatever skill deficit they have, any lacking skills.
At their level, easy enough to, to get it and move forward, but hard enough to make it work.
I think on that, like being in mind that usually in a summary, you're gonna move on average about twenty percent of your learning. And so when you're looking at this data for fall. That should just be, you should keep that in mind. I think um, generally too, if we had a preschool head, not a head start, but a preschool type of program. I mean, you're gonna have a lot of these numbers increase right from the start up to forty percent. And so that's really important, um, just to keep in mind as we're looking at, you know, uh, great need, especially with intervention. That yellow tells me we need interventions.
So I, uh, my, my brag was just that referrals were down thirty percent in the month of October. Which is to me amazing because I'm tired of entering referrals into the PIS app. But I think that um, our current. Behavior person coupled with a place to be, uh, to deescalate is really kind of um, helping that. And then they're staying in class. I don't have students living in my office because we did a lot of that last year. Going on to the I ready scores from twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. This is just giving you the picture. Where kindergarten started and where they ended up. In terms of, of the, the last testing, you can see what an impact that these interventions or side by side with, you know, teachers teaching. That there was a lot of growth. But you'll see it for all grades. The last year for both reading and math. Let's say it's standalone intervention, so it's, you know, teaching as well. Driftwood twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Final diagnostic end of year.
Got my, I hasn't started here.
Did I find this stuff? Free cake, but.
Do you see it? Yeah. Year end and then started the year last. Just uncut your goals. Everybody have it? Okay, okay. Sorry, what did I do?
Third grade, starting year, you.
Actually, like another, just bring it back. So it's, you know, like, it was my brother.
That's mine. It should be one, start of the year, year end, yeah.
And I have a little at the top too.
Okay, so when I look at that. This is showing last year's beginning of the year and end of the year. Gotcha. That matches what we were looking at last year. We saw in Title One. Get their strap and really make some impact at speed.
And the one thing I worry about with the diagnostics is that we do have kids that just push buttons and. If you want to engage and, and that's the same thing with the state testing, so. You know, it's the best we have to go on. But you can talk to some teachers and they'll say, well, I know that, that, you know, so and so could do that. They just didn't want the age, so. Way of it at that as well.
I think that comes back to some of the questions you had about how we, how we promote that, how we um. Try to provide some incentives and. And try to work on some of those mindset issues of. Kids to really take pride in what they're doing and understand that it's, it's gonna impact them in a positive way. Um, those are not easy things to, to share with little ones, but uh, it's definitely we can add in there to try and make an impact.
You know, we try to do. A little bit of everything in student of the month, right? We want good citizenship. We want good attendance. We want, you know, completing assignments. So we might want to just add on something for strictly academics.
Exactly. I dou, I doubled my, I doubled my score and.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know, not, not under the criteria line, whatever point or was, I doubled.
It's based on where you start, right? And then you're demonstrating uh, growth that's uh, above and beyond and the, you know, you get student of the month as well, so. That's a.
All the double.
That's an ease, that's an easy thing to do, right?
Party for all the doubters or.
They get a pizza party once a month. I don't need to know about my team's and I'm wrong, Steve or something. When did you begin the pizza incentive?
That was, that was a place from Krista. It's not like it's getting Krista.
I've got, I've got twenty students showing up by my side. Because I, I do it every other month rather than every month.
We're, we're gonna pirate out that.
No, well, I was. Yeah, I can dress up like Talon. I'll dress up like Talon. Uh, I found that when we just did it every month. It was one kid from each class and they were shy. But if I got two from each class, they, they had a blast. So I was trying to make it a lot of fun for them. So we'll see how it goes. The last pages are uh, the way that Title One is tracking Dibble scores and progress. And I just wanted to give you an example. Um, so the red obviously is, you know, we're. We're in need of some serious intervention. The orange is below grade level, the green, they're kind of at grade level, and then the blue, they're above, at or above. And so as we do our diagnostics, this is the. Way it looks. Coming out of Title One. So I can share more data with you as we collect it.
Um, one, so. ESF is phoneme. And that's where they have to reproduce all the different sounds that are in a word. Um, nonsense word fluency is exactly what it says. It's where three letter nonsense words are there and they have to decode them using phonics. Um, rules and skills. And um, and then they get up into oral reading fluency, which is really a grade level passage and seeing how many words in that they can read. And that's the, and that's really what happens from third, fourth and fifth grade on. Well, in second, they don't do uh, the, they still do nonsense words at second.
But they don't do the. Second.
Yes, they don't do the segmenting. So one of the lower level ones goes off each year and then they eventually get to just oral reading fluency. In third grade.
Yeah, the automaticity of the flow and see. Is. Sure for them to get beyond and into the content. Have a lot of kids that are just still struggling to get through it. Comprehending what they're reading. If ideas you have for me. Right, thank you. Well, I've got my work cut out for the, for staff this.
I'd like to see that the data that you're. Acting to the longest center is aligning direction.
I'd like to get sure that November is good, you know, they're comparing it for previous years.
Where were you at? I got it on the switch for referrals and think about the loans from after the sharing is kind of how much are you having increased or what's it like?
The number of referrals were down, were, were down. I was actually higher in September. In referrals, but they're all kind of dry. And then thirty percent lower for the month of October. So that's what I'm looking at. So I'm kind of hoping that we maintain that now that we settled into the routine. And now Michael actually gets some of the, you know, like those money.
And I don't, I don't have data on it, but never mind. I'm involved still, it feels a little calm.
Yeah, it does.
There is a different problem after this year. I think the initiatives that are in place make a difference. Yeah, and changing climate has a difference too. Our actions and wellness room and. Driving and construction and. Intervention for those kids. That aren't at grade level goes a long way. So a lot of behaviors happen. When you're, the work is too hard or you're bored. So uh. You know, when we're bored, we find something to do. And when it's too hard, we shut down. Find something to do. So having uh, small groups and interventions that really address a student where they're at. And taking them from where they're at and moving forward, those are the things that are gonna have a positive impact on behavior as well.
Well, one of the things that I thought was really important to me, and it's not something that, it's probably too much detail that you can't share with us, but at least at a school level. But as we look at like the, the red, yellow, green, that we're seeing good growth in all of those sections that we're not just focusing on our red kids and the green kids are frustrated or.
Right.
So um, you know, as you have ways to share that, that's always.
Um, I can, I can do that. And the way I would share it would be um, tracking it. Through Title One information that I can block out the names and then I can show you their improvement on a individual level of that something.
You're doing all the right thing.
Yeah, could you share real quickly about how your TLCs work and how they um. You still are talking about students that are in need of spent services, but. Of the TLCs to rest.
The MTSS or, okay, so uh, I'm, I'm sure that we've had them before, the MTSS, but I, we didn't have one that was really operating last year.
Well, thank tiered systems of support.
Sorry.
All right.
I think that. We had a referral packet and teachers had to take on the, you know, the, the duty of filling out a referral packet to send to special education. And it was not really clear and there was a lot of back and forth about who would provide interventions and how are we gonna document any progress or lack thereof. And so um, I've got this MTSS group and it's Dawn and Johansson Meyer and myself will always be the consistent members. Because we have the Title One uh, intervention data. And teachers who have a concern, whether it's academic or behavioral, they'll come, they'll bring their concerns. We'll have all of the Title One data as far as reading and math goes. Um, and then we can suggest some classroom interventions and teachers can then engage in, provide them with some materials. Have them do that for three weeks and then come back to the team to see whether or not the student has made improvement. If the student's making improvement, we're just gonna continue with intervention, very much like a response to intervention model. If the student is not making an improvement, then um, we're going to then call the parent in, we're gonna call uh, Billy Stout in. Or Vicky's, uh, Vicky, who is our new special education teacher. Uh, and have a meeting with them to talk about, well, do we want to do evaluations or can you suggest some other types of. Strategies that we could be using and then we can measure that data. But it's a dialogue rather than just a here referral, we want testing. So it's um. We had one meeting. I have one evaluation coming out of that. I have about three students. Who we've got uh, Title One data from where they are not making any progress with the interventions. So those students most likely will go directly to uh, be evaluated. But anybody else that comes up, we're collecting data.
In that MTSS piece at elementary. The majority of those conversations, there's, there's gonna be some need to discuss students that are on IEPs in special education, but. The bigger purpose is to really look at those kids that are not identifying with sped, but still struggling. And that's where we are looking at all of those pieces, all the different levels. And that's where we are looking at all of those pieces, all the different levels. How do we provide intervention? And then you mentioned also the extension piece. If we've got kids that are already reading at or above grade level, what do we do with them? So that they continue to grow as well, but not just to meet. Uh, how do we get them to exceed and really flourish with their skills? And build those skills as well.
What's happening?
I was gonna say, so anybody that would be talented and gifted. Would have that it's that time, right, with lessons crafted to address the fact that they are um. Advanced learners, and we can then create opportunities for them to continue on their path and their trajectory.
Do there be any data on our type program, either from teachers supporting you or the students that are involved?
Um, we could cer- we could certainly pull data on kids that are identified as tag. Um, there. It may be. Something there for us to. There is not may, there is something there for us to discuss on whether we can share that or not, because we do not have a high number of um students identified as tag. And when we share individual information, it needs to be in a way where the kids can't be identified. But uh we can come up with something to share some tag data.
I'm trying to gather that up for tag, because usually you have to get through special qualifications.
You know, um, the special qualifications are what identify you as tag. You've got to hit the ninety seventh percentile on um. Specific tests, uh, those recommendations uh to assess can come from the parent or. Uh, any staff member. Uh, I've had teens self um.
We don't have a coordinator.
Yeah, well, we do have a coordinator.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm still learning.
In terms of the tag program where we've got a kid identified and we're going to have them in a special tag class, there are some bigger districts that. Can do that. We do not have uh anything like that. What we have is. Uh, teachers that need to work with parents and figure out how to differentiate instruction to meet their um talented and gifted needs. So that is um generally how that works. Very. Very good.
I've had several families come to me, you know, ask telling me that their students are are tag students, but the data doesn't support it. They might be in one area but not another, and it has to be across the board.
Um, and by district policy, it's a ninety seventh percentile, which is a pretty high level to meet. Um, and. You know, you really do have to have those tag capabilities uh to do that. Uh, we also use that same criteria. If a family wants to enter their kindergarten stupor. Um, they have to um take an assessment and meet that tag level. Starter, which is again a ninety seventh percentile. On the provided assessment.
My mind is still thinking about Bob's comment that he made earlier in the meeting. About how we have like these uh. Positive achievement awards and all of that stuff and. And also, I think I heard someone say, you know, um, just. Maybe the parents' interest in their students' achievement and stuff. And so. Do we have? Like, I know that Lisa and Diane, you know, talk together and that you're involved, but. Is there like a committee? We had those stepping stones last year. Is there anything that, you know, looks at that and thinks about? I mean, that's a major cultural thing in the community is. How invested are they in students achieving individually? Definitely. It just seems like that could be at least a component of. Improving our scores is to change that cultural. Outlook towards student achievement. I'm not talking about the high school level because not that I. Just missing them as not being important, but there are a lot of programs at a high school level and even at a middle school. Round where they have groups that come in and have different things, you know, but. At the elementary level, where you're really setting that foundation because basically. From my perspective and experiences, if you have a child who is struggling and at third grade. They are still struggling to read and all of a sudden they're shifting over to read, to learn. You have lost them. And the same with a lot of that. There is a big switch in mathematical learning. Between third grade. And fourth grade, because at the third grade, they're still kind of learning the. You know, the basic ideas of addition, subtraction, and. You know, this shape fits together with this shape and that spatial awareness and all of that stuff. But in fourth grade, you're starting to use that information to understand what's being taught in fourth grade. And so it just seems like um. It could make an impact. If we can. Change that culture of thinking. By the time they're in second grade, because at third grade, we're already at the benchmark and they're already behind.
Well, that's that is the reason why the third grade reading benchmark is there, because.
Yeah.
Statistics show pretty clearly that if we can get kids proficient. That third grade, the percentage chance of them. Uh, dropping out decreases significantly. If they're not reading by third grade. Struggle continues, their chances go up.
And each year it gets higher.
Yes. Which is um, you know, we'd asked about the the lily pad piece. Um. I think Title One um is not necessarily a lily pad that we're working on or a part of any of the groups. Um, specific pieces, but that Title One element. And what we did last year in getting it started and established and what we're continuing to do. With professional development at the elementary level and and how we analyze the data to improve ourselves. I think those are huge pieces. Um. One of the um lily pads from last year that did uh make progress and achieve their um actionable item. Was universal strategies um. Lily pad, which they focused on PDIS at the elementary. And so those changes in behavior. Um, adding the wellness center. I think those are all pieces that contribute to the that foundational piece, because we've got to have. Attendance. We gotta have them here. We gotta have them behaving so that they're following along and really able to pick up on what's happening. And then the third piece, the ABC is the the coursework and how well they're performing. And if we get them here. And we have systems in place to help them with behavior and emotional support, that coursework will continue to build on those pieces. And as we continue to add intervention and be intentional in what we do. With sped. With Title One for the next set of kids that are struggling. And then it's key that what happens in, you know, sped and Title One aren't just there to fix things. They're there to help support. But what we do instructionally at the core level. In classroom and how they use small groups to provide um. That differentiated instruction for those kids that aren't going to another group. And how they provide differentiated instruction so that each kid, even if they're going to a sped group or a titled group. They're still getting core instruction at their grade level. And that has to happen too, because we we have to make. Uh, exponential progress for those kids that are behind, but they won't get there. So yes, we are. Working on those things. And I think as we continue to put intervention in place and get everybody on board. Um, to be consistent, that we will see some of those lily pad groups focus on those things that are. Universal strategies that each person can use in their core instruction class.
So. I hear what you're saying. And I agree with you on all of that. But I think where my question comes more because. What I hear and what I see is our teachers work hard. Our teachers care about our kids. And our staff are invested in our children. So my question is going a little bit beyond that, because when it comes to the education of the child. In today's world, it's more than the school. And so our teachers can care. And they can spend hours and hours. Of investing themselves into their classrooms and into their students. But I'm looking at the other components, because we have the school. And we have the community, and we have the parents. And so where my question is coming from is. I think that our school really does focus, and I think our teachers and our staff, and I'm not talking about just teachers. I'm talking about all the staff, the people that work in the cafeteria, the people who work in keeping the schools clean, the people who are driving the buses. All of those people. From what I see in here are invested in our students. But my question is, is. Are we at a place in the lily paths? That we can look at the community and the parents? And how they become invested in our students as students?
I think we're finding, trying to find our way there. So, for instance, the early school success folks, that's the same question that they're asking as well. And that's really just looking K to three. How do we get parents invested? How do we, what tools do we need to give them? So um out of that um. Seminar that we went to, our Title One Family Night is one of some of those learning components. So rather than just coming in and playing games. They're going to come in and they're going to get pieces of the things that we're working on, you know, in school. And give them tools that they can kind of back that up and work with their students. Um, and I think that we need to continue to do that. So it's still going to be fun. They're still going to win games, but they're going to go through a tutorial. And they're going to get something to take home, uh, and then do it for math in the spring. So those are the two things that we can do like now this year. But I totally agree with you. And we need, we need parents to be invested in their students' learning and the body. Being curious about what they're learning and being able to, you know, kind of reinforce it at home.
Be for every parent. We happy to have a reason to be proud of kids. Give them a reason. Recognizing, making a big splash for every kid who doubles or whoever forever and stuff. And uh, you know, making a celebration of that that involves the parent going.
We used to do, and and I I think they still do it. We've got stacks of postcards. They're the the notes home, you know, and as a teacher, I used to use them all the time. Anytime anything went well, they got a postcard and the kids loved it. And so that's just something that we can, you know, continue to use, uh, but do more of it, because I don't see that we're doing a lot of it right now.
Well, and parents are susceptible to. Looking good in the community as well. It's though, you know, that's great. I use the postcard to do that.
Some of the kids used to come in and say, oh, well, this is when I'm on the post home and I will thank you. It was really great.
Having some, having some way to. Have parents on the back for work when they give you two.
Passive communications between school and parents rather than the referral or call or.
Yes.
Only hearing from the.
Yeah, one from one, maybe one, one point, one all.
The correct.
Okay, we are at six oh seven. Been here for an hour. Yes, we do. So we're here. But I think we are also at a point where we need to change gears and provide some uh. Some time to share her data and answer questions about what's happened in the high school. And then uh, probably if if that goes all the way. To the end, uh, we probably should leave another few minutes just for overall general questions that come up, because something there might spark a question. That's my suggestion to the.
Five, nine, ten, eight.
We'll go on to the second portion.
Yeah. Oh, A five. This is the phrase that I use.
I'm thinking. Is that the one where you can sit, that you can leave the table? This table's something wrong with my.
I move the word recess for five minutes. The word stand bees. Five minutes. Okay, for providing. So these are all from our, I I did request that examples from our CTE programs. This is a. A superintendent goal that we should be aware of and supporting. Um, my student created a really lovely. Cutting board with the laser etcher. He would not allow me to put directly on it. So the teeth is on top of the.
It's really cool. I don't want you to mess it up.
Oh, forget it. Cut on it one time.
Oh, uh.
I got oil, for sure.
Oh.
Yeah, of course. I brought nothing to play.
Deep black. It's like, you know. I thought. You can hold it.
I knew.
Um. This is what I counted. Last. Yeah.
All this time playing with the parts.
It's simple.
But I didn't shoot. I just put it on my hands here on lunch. Right, it's just about Sonic and. All of those love. And I forgot to bring the fork. And then it's a guy's smartphone was like. Five. For the.
Obviously.
Things we have in front of us will be like.
The chat.
And notice the beautiful eggs that come from our.
Yeah.
Articles program. So, you know, it's me, you gotta know it.
Yeah.
Raising broccoli. I'll probably use a rinse, but there's. There's some others. Maybe we have cups. Someone never there to. Because you're much, right, these are mine. She said, I'll have them make first well, right? Shall I have a full setting of twelve? Never been like, yeah, we ate enough, oh, we didn't have enough, right? So I was like, oh, I just want this for sure. Yeah, I could do.
How great our power standard, because we can talk about. We're not.
I'm getting, they're not getting it. There you go. Yes, I didn't. And these are out of the birch as well as cauliflower eggs. This is what this. And bronze and he, but there it is. This is probably be difficult here. These are the things that.
What you should mention.
We've got tools, we've got support. They shouldn't be a mystery.
No, no. How we do it from the.
This is, I don't know, this this is the. I can literally. Oh, very cool. Our new adapt counselor, my name's Mallory. He has a therapy. She said, it's enough to have my bricks and. Well, once my, what if I, I thought, you know, I'm gonna. Never mind. And she said, plan for twelve. That's how I set a twelve.
Okay.
And then jar pops. It's for people who take things home. Um, did you go over to the, I had set myself.
That works.
Look, you're taking home some salads. Well, we tried to talk about it, I went past all the places. Good for you.
I was wondering my baseball.
And it was behind praise that I had so.
And you see like said, farewell and you have some losses. Over our games. We played pretty well. So the rest, if we will play the rest of the game and. Leave a line in.
Did everybody walk off and feel, so everybody was still breathing?
Yes, Friday. Where we went down. That was fun in and of itself.
Well, you see, it's not always necessarily about the wins and the losses.
I did feel that, and I told my kids for two years, when we were down there fifty something playing the. I told my kids twice, I've never had so much fun going through this. I feel. I straight down. You know, I'm not big on.
Right. Yeah, she's not like my mom, who was like sex. You can just call the meeting back. There, I assume. It's gonna be some change. I will call the meeting back before the.
And well, what I am going to share is that I think over here I still have a lot to learn. I've been running learning staff and students and different processes with disability. Eighth grade math proficiency, I'm just going to start with that. I had hoped that we were finding out already at the beginning of the year. I ready is all of the data that we've been looking at. And to make that a K eleven or K twelve process that we can see. So then you would see the same apple and oranges all the way through. You know, it's a national based assessment, but again, you can see individual student growth and you can also see where we are as a school. That has been kind of tabled and I had thought that's how we were going to start. So we started IXL too, but then they didn't finish it. So I don't have an assessment per se, but I can have them do IXL. We won't have that to look at what the elementary has. It will just kind of give a quick snapshot, but I'm going to ask that it's done later in spring. And I'm ninth grade on track. I've been monitoring since I do not have any tools per se that generates the data. So I would just spend my time probably longer treating the students. So October seventh, I listed all of the students that had Ds or Fs. And there were quite a few, about forty to fifty percent. And so I assigned every student, two teachers, mentor teachers to work with them. We brought in the after school tutoring program. We called parents and said, hey, you need to come in. This is why they're failing this class or they were out at this time and this is the homework they need to do. I've also met with a few families trying to ensure we care, we need them here, that matters. By the time I put this report together for ninth grade on track, we only had one student who had three Fs. And she's also a student that I'm working with. Oral officer and family, paper kind of displacements. And so I'm still going to be working pushing up to try to get her credits any way that you can. So that is the ninth grade on tracks. Everybody else is on track and we have nineteen students. So. Yeah. And twelfth grade on track or the four year grad rate, we have that at a hundred percent. We have one student that we have a plan for that we're working with. That is somewhat new, like in the last two school years, year and a half, two Pacific. And then there's another one that we just got on October thirteenth and we've given that student some classes, of course. But I do not, I have not received previous history and transcripts to know exactly what that placement is in order for me to make sure that that is a hundred percent correct. So yes, we got plans in place, but those are kind of the two misnomers that I'd rather be transparent and share everything about. So I can just continue to help them and we give them the support, yeah. We have no five year completers. They're. When I look at attendance. We have data that's kind of coming through differently and that was just a piece that I am continually, continually trying to iron out. So if I'm looking at synergy, it's, it's not showing data. Like I have the percent of participation for each grade level. But I still feel like some of it is not accurate. So I'm not seeing some tardies, things like that coming up. And then I'm seeing other reasons, but it doesn't tell me what those other reasons are. And then it's like, for example, I'm looking at my twelfth grade attendance and if I look at every student. So we have nine, nine, twelve graders and then I count twenty eight days each of they've all spent. That's five hundred eighty eight days like in all. And then out of that, I have five point five absences. So if you minus the five point five, five eighty eight, we have five eighty two point five. And that's still at a ninety eight percent attendance rate. And so when I look at that with twelfth grade, according to the stats I'm giving, that's at eighty five point ninety seven or eighty six percent. And so I'm just diving more into that and making sure that either our staff, that we are putting in the attendance accurately. Or that it's being fed in there accurately with some different components that are going on in the school. So I'm just learning that and trying to make sure I'm giving the best numbers. Seventh grade attendance at this time, we have eighty six percent, eighty nine point five three, eighth grade, eighty eight, eighty nine percent of the ninth grade, eighty five percent, tenth grade, eighty four percent, eleventh grade, eighty one point four seven. And then twelfth grade, eighty six percent, which has a total scale of eighty six percent. And what I've been doing is I started doing a weekly attendance, everybody that has a hundred percent attendance. We go into a weekly drawing every Friday, we announce who they are. They come and they get candy bar or treat or whatever. It's simply on a pick. Doing a ninety percent, hundred percent quick kind of field trip like within the, from the school, whether it's like pizza in a movie or a popcorn movie or something like that. Monthly and at the end of the year, I'm doing one field trip. I'm going to have ASV choose these with the students, whether I'm going to do a Google farm or something like that. And that will be for a hundred percent, a perfect attendance. They will have their own part wonderful, and then everyone for ninety percent and better. So for me, we do have the four eight twelve, but I've been doing one or less actions per month. Within nine or less within the school year. So that's kind of the goal that I've been setting with the kids, putting that into announcements. So postcards, I had asked staff at the beginning of the year to do two per week. It's something that I've always done as a teacher and an admin, which just leads me to send out positivity to students. So that's something that we have been rolling out. State testing, I'm starting in January, making announcements to go out and also asking teachers to, those that want to, I'm going to be looking at how they've done that in the past. It sounds like they have one person do state testing last year that was over in the media room. You have better results if you have teachers that teach the content, give the tests. And so I'm going to take a staff photo on that and assess if you're going to ask them to do that in the classroom. So we'll be able to do. I'm also going to make sure that there's snacks in place for those kids that are doing that. There'll be a weekly drawing for kids that are taking those tests. And I just want to, I really want to emphasize to them that when they take these tests, and I come from an area, I used to remember in birth, there was very low participation. And, and last year trying to change that, bringing in rewards and things like that in the drawings and such, that's something that I was a part of. But for kids to really embrace, this is the time where you get to, to tell your teachers, thank you. And I want to show you like how much I'd learned and make our school shine and our math scores are so low as a district. And I know that that's not a real reality of where they are. And so I want to impress it on them. You know, this is the only way you can say thank you is to say, this is how my teacher has taught me. And to not just go and check see or get through that. And so I'm going to be emphasizing that in January when I start letters. Other things that I've been noticing, this is just a little kind of side note, but it goes into the, just the data that I have to give. Noticing some of the things that we have three new teachers and a lot of referrals and you're talking about Swiss representation. I'd say ninety five of my, ninety five percent of my referrals are coming from three new teachers. And so that's telling me that they need to have more classroom management, they need to have more expectations in place. And so I've been meeting with some teachers and saying, you know, what are your expectations? So you're having your bell ringers, you know, and your kids are coming in, what's the expectation? They need to walk in and you just sit down. And you do the bell, their bell ringer, you're doing your attendance, you go over this lesson. And then as soon as you go through the lesson, then you're going to have three to five things in the classroom wall, you're working on next. So that's when they're always on, tasks are always learned. Also bringing in different things within their bell ringers, memes, technology things, things where kids are engaged and we're not just reading something and then reproducing. So they're making things more creative. And then other aspects that I want you to look for is you know, whether I'm looking for data for this year going into next or with the hope of getting some things started. Is counselor, so just be having a counselor coming in in December. So I've been spending a lot of time with student conferences, working with kids. You know, I think that they're transitioning and doing really well, but it's taken a lot of time and I've really enjoyed that time getting to know them. That's something that I just, just have that, that trouble to be with them. I've taken our peer teacher who has a part time teaching schedule, a part time classified schedule. And I changed that to kind of our wellness room. So when I have kiddos that do have a half day in school suspension, I have her come in and then they sit and that's how we're trying to kind of piece in the old wellness or reset room. And then I'm looking, hoping to get the I ready. And then bringing that more interventions into the general ed classroom. And so we're generally looking at the data from Driftwood and that vast number of intervention, those are things that we can still continue into high school, especially when there would be for jobs and helping them to get ready to just start and launch. If we don't help them now, especially late elementary and middle school, they stop trying. And so that's where I think it's super important that when we have information for interventions that we can really put them and then talk about their, their personalized education plan, their pet plan, bring in their parents and then help them to launch in a way that's meaningful for them. Those are kind of my goals and what I'm working on and.
So have you found the summer recovery program, I think that's by Carlin and stuff, has that like been helpful in students like achieving and are students able to come back to just like build skills in the subject that they're low in or is that program specifically for students who may not graduate if they don't take it.
Yeah, that's really important. The kids that we had in the February to graduate last year did that and got the requirement and earned their diploma. And so obviously the perk was late after graduation. But we have the summer to get them through. There are also some kids that were not graduates, that didn't need it to graduate, but they're working on credits and making sure that they've made up for something that they failed. Maybe that kids took advantage of that as well. And Ms. Carlton was our instructor last summer. And I believe she's one of the instructors that she's doing after school tutoring as well. I think that was last year.
And in fact, we have a great plan for that. So we have a math teacher, because that's generally, you know, a large area of need that comes on Tuesdays. And then this, yeah, he does science on Thursdays, but she's also very, she's got the E L A and a senior and that. So I feel like there's a little bit human place. We split it so that we can have.
Think that after school tutoring gives kids traction so they don't slip behind. Maybe some other moment to hopefully expand their studies well. We kind of focus with after standard class meetings.
Yeah, well, in last year I had heard that like the first meeting that was about my kiddos that had come and then it was an average of two. And I was like, that's just not good enough. You know, like I want to see more than that. So just putting more emphasis on sports too. If you're not passing, you have your, you have two weeks of the first week where you're, you're in, you're on probation, your second week that you're ineligible. And what does that look like? Are teachers reading books or this? So I can kind of presume that that's happening more often and then that's being checked. And then, then parents are called and then they're coming to the after school tutoring as well.
Described to.
I like that it's mandatory and I'm like, winky, it's not mandatory. So, but they need to come in and that they don't, you know, set that practice that they need it. So every time I've come in, we've had anywhere from ten to fifteen. So it's a pretty cool room. Yeah. So I'm like, yep, keep them coming. Yeah.
And you have both teachers on both tutoring days or the alternate?
Tuesdays math, Thursdays. But she's great. You know, science, she can do the math and you know, physics. Yeah. So she's.
And then I'm sure that we as a board have seen this, but I and Brian like have exactly where we were at at the high school level on our state testing. Rough last year. Do you know that data or?
I looked at it when I came to get interviewed and I remember math was at sixteen percent because I was surprised at that. Yes. And E L A, I think it was on the twenty, it was lower.
Still a little bit of time.
It was higher than math. I think it was twenty seven or twenty eight. Don't quote me on that, but you know. Generally, E L A is, is, you know, mid forties. And so, yeah. And a lot of that is just kids not taking the test seriously, which is why emphasis on it. But I still think, you know, bringing in the I ready, looking at the interventions, having those in play and then just different opportunities for them. This is very important.
Right, all of us have to go.
Yes, and it's consistent. So they know what to expect. So we just haven't consistently already getting these. Yes, and it's consistent, so they know what to expect, so we just haven't consistently already getting these five percent.
You know, other opportunities. I'm gonna have to guess the the pose that we're still spending money. Uh, shipping students around the countryside to play sports. All right?
Yes, every time we take a trip and have a game, we are.
It was a lot of time we spent sending them from this school to go to a math competition. Or spelling bee.
Or geography bee.
Last year, I believe, didn't we play in a high school competition that we sent?
Uh, we did, we sent, we sent C T E, um, they tend to be, they tend to be, and then we sent science as well with.
They tend to be a one thing you're trying to say. Or a what semester kind of thing, we send, we send kids off and our kids play sports every time. Why can't they be competing with neighboring schools of mathematics, geography, or also, or, and in recognition for them.
Do you know, I guess, do you know if there is a, I have not seen anything that's a direct competition here in this region? I know Southern Oregon has a, yeah, a. Social studies kind of.
Yeah, I'm not saying it feeds the Southern Oregon.
National Geographic ones and geography.
Definitely gets a point, no, understood, but if you do, it raises this, it's a whole thing, you get recognition if you're an athlete. Uh, but you don't get recognition if you're academically flawed.
Well, actually, there are some, I mean, when I was in high school, it was.
I'm saying well, not weekly.
Well, the chess in America.
Probably.
But not as loud.
Yes.
What about, you probably use quail about, yeah, and then chess club, these are, uh. Functioning.
Yeah.
At the school, um. There's gotta be the. Thick and. Right, F B L A wants to call the. Checks. Right, right, there's a bit, well, this school does support.
If we're supporting.
There's a. We used to spelling bee. Each one of these, and I had emailed over the summer and heard cricket, so I don't think that anybody's actually in charge of that anymore. But I can follow up and see if they got materials and if I can maybe.
Should be something, I think.
We should be able to type with local.
Local states there.
Yes, because one of our seniors used to consistently compete in that spelling bee.
You know, we had, we had, we had the reserve state competition, which too.
It's pretty does the science, I remember too, but I haven't seen the place of our kids at, and it's in Hope River.
It's in Port River, but in. You guys, do you know anybody that can send me some information on that? All right, cool.
Um, it's middle school, I wanna say it's. Six, seven, eight, I know we did like donate some money for the science fair that they did at school, but they didn't come competing against the other schools, so.
Appreciate. And that was another thing I was thinking about is, um, the academic showcase and art show, um. Showing off science experiments, that was a really good piece, and um, it was one of those opportunities, it's not a. A ribbon or a trophy or anything, so uh, they do have the opportunity to share those pieces, I guess they did give them first, second, third place. But recognizing those academic sales, that's another piece. But building on that, you're right, we, we're here for academics and and learning and. I can, I can put it in terms of money too, if we ever had a bond to pass that we had to to operate. If you drop math class and language arts class, there will be nobody that will come and donate money to pay for. If we drop soccer and track, there will be people that step up and say, I will give you all the money you need so that you run that program. So it's, it is something to definitely address, it's a societal piece, and um. No, I know you're not, I don't, I don't, just try, I'm agreeing with.
It did also reflect in our budget, we budget for sports travel. We don't budget for the chess club to travel to this big competition, you know. Budget for.
Fully.
The F F A.
We do some of those, but yes, we, that makes a lot of sense.
And I'm not talking that we have to pay for every competition that a club goes to, but. But we budget, and that is part of our thing, but we budget. Where are we putting the priority?
You know, we've, we could have some, um, money to make sure that we had enough to cover field trips. Uh, which is part of that, that those academic competitions and going to academic contests or. Something along those lines.
I wonder if that's something that other South Coast schools would be interested in. Yeah.
I wanna ask what they're doing, cause I, yeah.
Rotary has any sort of. I was giving a tension office, sorry, the tension, yeah.
They do. It's. It was speaking, we had kids go last year in.
Yeah, we did, and they did pretty well, I had a lot of vision.
Yeah, it's lots of.
Yes, and that was the one I was thinking, Southern Oregon. So now, so you, uh, but Ashland, um, they are the one sponsors that, um, geography, social studies be. In Southern Oregon, I said, son's sister-in-law is a teacher in Rogue River. She's done really well and beaten like Ashland and Grants Pass, that's all those bigger schools, so.
My conversation with Amanda Carlton, she loves teaching history and social sciences, and she wants to include that on our. Southern state statistics test this year, so. It'd be great, she buys debates every day.
So we have about fifteen minutes left, if you have other questions, um, about the new data. We have more suggestions. Think we're getting some good ideas, we were, uh, things that we can. Focus on or work towards, um, some other different ideas, you know, how we. Promote what we're doing to families and get them involved, so there's more of the partnership. Those are things that we live on all the time, I know all districts do. The data piece is one, you know, state averages. So as much as I don't wanna make excuses and say that that's okay, um. It is a constant battle that schools deal with to figure out how we meet those kids' needs and the ones that don't have that level of support where. Um, the kids don't have a choice except to just perform to what they're supposed to do. So, um, we have to keep working, uh, to figure out ways that will bring families in, uh. We have to figure out ways in classroom to make things enticing, so the kids wanna show up and wanna be here, and don't feel like they can miss class because. They've got this important project there, for whatever. And I feel like all of those things are things that we are working on, we're talking about, trying to figure out how we motivate. Um, as you can imagine, um, it's not just as simple as coming up with one thing, cause we have. If you look through all the standards, uh, for academics, you think about the social emotional needs our kids have. Uh, the wellness centers we put in place, um, counseling and the behavior specialist needs, um. There's a lot on the plate with every single education. And uh, trying to do it all is impossible, but we can continue to work on prioritizing so that we are. Doing the overall, general, um, universal instruction that is needed for everybody. But the more that we continue to add intervention to really focus on those individual students and what their needs are. I think that's where we really have the most, um, opportunity to gain traction. And those are also opportunities where our staff are involved in those interventions, they're helping kids. And we have staff that have the right attitude and right mindset, we're here for kids, I haven't always had that. And those connections also build things for kids. They build that foundation, they build that connection so that they want to perform. And we need to keep focusing on that and get our kids there earlier, but I think, um, as I've been through this for. Thirty-five, thirty-six years, whatever it is, I've seen so many kids that. They're not necessarily successful in high school. But we gave them the skills and the mindset that when they got out of school and realized. I guess I'm on my own now, and I've been pleasantly surprised many times that kids that they found their way. Want to help them find their way before they leave this building, but um, at least. Uh, we put and establish those things that have helped them find their way that maybe. There are realities.
I was, uh, when I look back on that, so. Be back to the States and. And evolve here, school up. How different the parent was and how. Larger a. Resource, if that's the word, I'm looking for, uh, the schools were for the kids who depended. I mean, there's so much. turmoil in their lives and home, you know, et cetera, and school really was the safe place. For so many of this, so I, and that's, and. I could see this school doing all these things, which, you're curious, I would tell, wouldn't they be doing that, so I think I'd many parents for it, you know, and in nineteen. Again, to understand, so I just don't wanna see it that. Go away, but I sure would love to see us be able to change, for, I'm pretty happy, it's a better bird, uh. Recognition, daily, weekly recognition, pats on the back, praise, uh. Uh, for the average student who is not gonna be on the basketball team or. And it means throw attention, you know, such that it's one more reason why they wanna be. I like chess, I can go to school, I cannot just play chess, like. Play competitive against teams from the schools, whatever, you know, just expand that dimension, I think, it's. My, in my mind, it'd be a great, um, addition for.
So I think that was really started with the Friday shift. Because that put in place a lot of really unique classes that people end up in, dear to their teacher way.
And the student response to it, which was initially skeptical, uh, they go along with it, it supports them, and they, they like. Like there, that there was something going on at school, that they, for whatever reason, um.
And it was better than starting the weekend early, which is a thing about sports.
What about what you were saying, with that difference between. Being in a, in an education system where that parental support is kind of inherent, you know, when they have. Financial supports, they don't have those family struggles that a lot of our families do. And, um, they don't have any statistics or anything, but. Some of those kids are, they get the highest A pluses because they have all of those things to deal with, and they show up every day. Yeah, and they're here every day, and they may not be performing at A, B, C level, some of them show up, and they don't do anything. But they show up here every single day because they need us. We have to figure out more of their needs other than just being their emotional support and. And meals and, uh, you know, a place where somebody cares about them for a period of the day. And really figure out what it is that they need and and work to provide those things. And I think we have that unique opportunity, being small, to really have that impact, if those things don't happen overnight, and. We, we make progress on what we focus on, so we have to continue to focus on what's important, get our top priorities. And then do the day job on everything with as best we can. You might keep being small, my last name, hospital, C D L. Um, it is going well, I believe we're at low to mid twenties right now. Um, we have had, uh, I don't know, we initially created it with numbers of new kids. Uh, we had to have that in order to make the program stable and financially viable. Um, we've had several students, um. Want to move from the brick and mortar building into the program, and for some of them, it has worked, and we've made that switch, it's the right thing. We've had a couple, but it is not the right thing. Uh, we have had several, and I've got one more on my desk, uh, to call tomorrow, but we've had several. Students that were looking that I'm just gonna homeschool, or I'm gonna go to Winter Lakes, and we've had conversations with them. And we have an alternative program that they're choosing. Uh, so I think it's going well, I think we still have, and not think, I know we have funds to work out with. Um, some recording pieces, um, of conversations we're having with parents, uh. Breaking their choosing, the work that they're getting done, things look like they're moving along, they're zip up. Indication that might be, some of those kids want to move back into the store, one already. And so that's gonna, that will create some, um. Some logistical issues for us to address in terms of, we can't have kids bouncing back and forth. So there's gonna be some limitation on, uh, the student that started and. And came back already, then you say, oh, well, no, I changed mine, they're not gonna go back and check again. We have to help some friends, there's some limits. Maybe we try to do it next year, but it can't be bounced back and forth, and again, you never get anything done, it takes progress. Cause you're constantly changing, I'm just thinking, oh, let's forget having that conversation about such a, such an organization that wanted to go for people. You might be able to draw so many students back into the brick and mortar environment, those two. We've taken a few from Bandon, returned, and we have a few go to Bandon this year, so it's kind of a wash. Uh, but I anticipate, um, there's a large number of, uh. Middle school students in Bandon that are not part of their school district at all. And I believe they're interested in seeing how things go and potentially. Taking advantage of that next year, I know Gold Beach, um, there are. Parents that are interested there, but I also know that Eric, the superintendent, is interested in putting something similar together. Uh, for his district, which, just logistically, I mean, they're the same number of miles away, but Bandon is closer to us. In terms of where people go, students going back and forth, so I don't anticipate a ton of kids coming from Gold Beach, but. I do believe that we'll have a few, the parents that were interested, and we'll see how things turn this year. We're going well enough that I think we're gonna add students.
Something, yeah, and like, more students. Yeah, eventually it means more teacher, the more teacher, a little less workload. Yeah, eventually it means working, sure, it's a bunch of you, a little less workload perhaps. Far as I'm actually happy with it.
Yes, and then um. Springtime comes, I plan to be intentional of reaching out to kids that are on our interdistrict transfer list and calling parents and talking to them. About these are the things we're working on and we've got in place. Are you going somewhere else? What can we do to get you back? And kindergarten kids coming in. Our kindergarten is our biggest class and um, family cap. And there's a. There is a group of families that have, that are kind of together in this and so as their kids come up being school age. They were already prepping to homeschool as they have with their other kids. And so putting them in kindergarten. Uh, in the program, that's. I think that's one of the reasons why it's. Taken off. Parents looking for all parents. So if we can do all of it really well, then can. Do what we do here in building well. Parents' needs that are doing things at home and figure out other things in between. Offer as much as we can to.
If I talk to random people in the community, the response has been one hundred percent positive when they hear about. Sorry, send up a great idea, that's wonderful, so glad to do the math. I think beyond the families themselves involved, it's a nice to hear.
Well, and another element of it is, is that we do have more alternative options at high school too. Got some kids that can go on some online programs, have support here um, in the, in the library elsewhere. And uh. They're not necessarily families that are going to be thrown off the academy. Really has to be parental support, family support there. As the teacher, we've got some students that were interested in an option, but uh. It wasn't really going to work for them. But we've also had some, but uh, you know, we, we've convinced us we've given them a chance and. If they perform and it works, then we all get what we're. Successive kids. More options we can provide to our, we can keep everybody back who's been here.
Also predators peppered options within that zone, instead of waiting for the summer. Want to ensure that your team makes.
It appears with, with nearing the end, what final questions are we have? I, yeah, I just, um, I'm still thinking about like the academic competitions and things like that. And so with that, that's being investigated, I know we talked about it during the school level. But they often have those available at least starting like fifth or sixth grade, which would be our upper elementary level. So when we're looking at that for a district, um, a lot of those things that earlier you can set the hook, the. Yard or. Catch, so anyway.
I would just say thank you both, Lisa and Yana, for your time and your work and sharing. It's really helpful to get a more deep depth of understanding of. You know, what you're seeing, what's going on. I just really appreciate that.
And I also thank you just for the mini hats that you are wearing. And artists, um. You also deserve applause and thank yous. Appreciation for what you do. District, I mean, I know I speak a lot of times about the teachers and the staff, but. Um, you may not realize I'm also speaking about you. So thank you.
And I would, and I would thank all of you forward members. With again, spending another evening with us, uh, but. Really good questions, really good input. There's a lot of things here for us to talk about and see how we can work to implement. Um, as always, with all of your suggestions, we can't put everything in place. For whatever reason, but there's some great ideas here that I think um, we can incorporate into what we do or begin embedding it into what we do. Good ideas, I think.
I motion. Motion adjourn.
I'll say.
A second. Discussion.
You learned that.
Any more, I really have to do to say. Senior's over their business, but I haven't quite gotten that function. Okay.